All right, so it looks like it's six o'clock. Is everybody ready? Okay.
There you go.
All right, so welcome to the special meeting of the City of Delray Oaks City Council. Today is Tuesday, January 11, and it's six o'clock. Could you please do a roll call, Karen?
Councilmember Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Here.
Councilmember Gagliotti.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lintel.
Here.
Mayor Kerr.
Here. So we're all in attendance. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. It's time for public comments. It's general public comment dealing with any matter subject to the jurisdiction of the City of Delray Oaks and the council that are not on the agenda. The public may comment on any matter listed on the agenda at the time the matter is being considered. There will be a time limit of no more than three minutes for each speaker and no action will be taken. Any public comment? I am not seeing any, so we're going to close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council want to pull any item on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I'd like to pull 4B.
Okay. Anybody in the public want to pull anything on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll come back. Mr. Gagliotti.
Yeah, I mean, do we want to just vote on, was it 4A, 3, whatever, accept the consent agenda and then open 4B for discussion?
Uh, I see no reason not to have the discussion.
You're probably right. I'm sorry. Yeah, you're probably right. Why don't we just have the discussion? And if we can clear this up, then maybe we can just then bring it all back into that.
What, what is on your mind?
So in 4B, there was one switch. I'm primary, I was moved primary to seaside sanitation, seaside and sanitation. And historically, that's been Pat Lintel's role, and I've been, I've been, I'd like to put that back to where it was.
It was not an intentional flip, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. So Karen, have you got that? So the number four, Seaside County Sanitation District, Pat Lintel is the primary and Gagliotti is the alternate?
I got it. Thank you.
Okay.
That was the only, that was the only switch. Pat, did you have any, I'm sorry, through the, through the chair, Pat, did you, did you have any? I don't see her anymore.
She's here.
Is there?
Yeah. And she's listening.
Okay. Did, did you have, did you, I mean, I just assumed that you wanted, you wanted to stay primary. Is that, is that fine?
That is true. I would like to stay primary.
Okay, okay, great. All right, then, then, then that's it, Mayor. That's, that's all I have.
I have a little question also on the Monterey Regional Waste Management District. There's no alternate. Shouldn't we have an alternate there?
That's according to their bylaws. They do not have alternates.
Oh, okay. Very well. Thank you.
Sure.
And if you trip, might be good to explain something like that, you know, in the packet.
Okay, so maybe no alternate needed based on bylaws or something?
Yes, right.
Okay. So any other comments?
No. If, if we accept those changes, then maybe we can just put it all back in and take it all consent.
So I'm happy to hear a motion?
I move that we, we accept the consent agenda with the, there's, there's change in 4B.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't catch if we went to the public on that one, just for the record.
That's absolutely right. You're right.
He didn't.
Okay.
Yes.
Originally, yes.
Okay.
My apologies.
That's okay. It's a good check.
All right, so.
All second.
Great.
Um, Karen, can you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gagliotti.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintel. Vice Mayor Lintel.
Aye.
Mayor Kerr.
Aye. So the consent agenda passes. Wonderful. Let's move on to new business. Item 5A, receive a report on fiscal sustainability goals. Mr. Gerton.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Yours.
Okay, we'll go as quick as possible tonight, since three of you had to suffer through this on Friday. See if I can get my. There we go. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, um, nothing new. We met with the Finance Committee on Friday to go over some fiscal stuff. Thought it was a good time to be talking about this stuff now with the kickoff of the budget cycle season, which is typically January through June. I've been talking since I, with you all, since I got here about some of the foundational gaps that I've seen in some of our operations, some of the tools that we have. I don't think many of these things are shocking to any of you all, but I just want to kind of highlight them and start to have a roadmap ahead of us as we go forward, so that when we're talking about how to use ARPA money, when we're talking about staffing issues, things like that, you all have this in the back of your mind, so you can see where we're going and we have a roadmap for that. One of the things is, is that in our strategic plan, you know, we come up with these six, six-month goals, and we kind of think higher level stuff and, and bigger projects. And those are all great, but we really have to have a strong foundation in our financial management, our financial operations, if we're going to achieve those goals and keep them up and keep them going for the long term and, and be efficient. So that's what we're talking about here is coming back to that. A lot of the work is, has been done and is ongoing. For example, you've seen, over the last year or so, you've seen changes in the, in the financial reports that Roberto's been presenting to you, and you've seen a general progression in that and standardizing those. Somebody trying to break in. Sorry, there's staff. Somebody at the front door was getting loud. So, or was I? So you've seen the, the reporting from Roberto. We've been working on that, trying to do better at presenting information that's understandable for, for staff, for the council, for the public, and then consistent. So we want things to be, remain consistent. And then there's, there's basic things that larger organizations who have staff and have succession planning and have the time to be able to put together SOPs and things like that, things that they take for granted are things that we need to work on. It's just part of being a small organization with limited resources, but we're taking the time to focus on those things now. So one of those things is, is ensuring the integrity of the accounting system. And what we're talking about there, there's basic things that need to be done. Like, I found out in meeting with Roberto and talking to Roberto, we haven't had the last five fiscal years of financials closed out. That's a standard thing that needs to happen every year. It causes problems if you keep them open, because changes can happen, and you don't want changes to happen. You, you have to close off your financials at a certain point, so that now you're building off of something that's set in stone. Another thing is establishing guidelines and protocols for our account, our account management, so, so that all of our accounts in the system, the naming conventions are the same. When we create a new count, everybody understands what the name of the account is, how to find it, what it means, so that the accounts are consistent and work between our financial system and then the ADP system and payroll, all those kinds of things. Establishing recurring transactions and protocols for how we do things, just so that, you know, we are small and we have, we have a tendency to be siloed within individuals. And so if one person goes out because of a COVID issue, or somebody retires, or somebody leaves, all that institutional knowledge goes with them. And so we want to come up with some standard procedures and document those procedures, and then train new staff on those procedures, and have some redundancy and understanding and training, so that folks know their business, and they also know the business of the person next to them, so they can fill in and have some ability to fill in gaps when we need to, because we have to be a little more agile than some of the bigger groups. So like I said, a lot of that work has been done with RGS. The contract that you all just approved on consent, that's the contract for our regular everyday operations with RGS. So accounts payable, accounts receivable, payroll, all of the general accounting stuff that they help us with, as well as some HR backup. That's, that's that contract. That's to get us through the rest of the fiscal year. That was already contemplated in the budget and was budgeted in the budget. This, this work that we're talking about here is above and beyond that. So it's the next step of kind of cleaning up some of the stuff that's left to get us where we need to be to have sound accounting and fiscal controls and operations. So Roberto and I will be working on what that means, what a timeline is for that, and then some cost estimates. And then we'll come back probably as part of the ARPA discussion and recommending using some of the ARPA for that. That includes also then some more strategic and planned-out training for the staff. I really, Karen would tell you that, that the only reason Karen's still here and saying is because RGS was here. There was a lot, you know, transition over the last year or so, and because of folks having their own specific jobs and their own specific tasks and, and job responsibilities, and, and not so much training across positions, you know, Karen could explain better to you, but, you know, when Kim left, that left, left a big gap in the operations, and a lot of institutional knowledge went out the door. And even if they had planned on downloading all of the information that Kim had in her head to Karen, there's no way for that to happen in a month or a couple of weeks. And so, you know, Karen, Karen's here and saying, because we had Roberto and we had RGS here to bolster that and keep us operating and keep, keep the basics going, and then training Karen on how to use the MIT system, how to do payroll, how to do all of those things. So, so that's what RGS has been helping us with. But we want to increase the training of staff, so that we don't have to rely so heavily on RGS to fill that gap for us. And so we're going to put together a plan for getting Karen specifically trained in the financial system, so that she knows the basics. She understands what our Melinda's doing and is able to back up our Melinda and have better back and forth conversations with her. And then we'll do the same for Randy, so we have some redundancy and some of the knowledge base that we have here on the staff. And it'll help with succession planning, so that then, as, you know, someday Karen's going to want to retire after I retire, and then Randy's going to, you know, we want Randy to be positioned to step up and take that role and not lose anything and keep, keep the lights on, keep everything going smoothly. So again, same thing, I'll be working with Roberto, put together a plan. This will be an initial plan to get the training started, and then we'll put together a plan going forward for continuing that training and continuing to grow in the knowledge base here. That'll help me. It'll help Jeff and, and Chris and Ron and everyone, because we'll have support here with the folks that we talk to day-to-day. It's great that we have the support with consultants, but the consultants aren't here. I can't see them. I can't just walk right out of the office and ask them questions, so that, that, that is a bit of a delay. So the more information that Karen or Randy have, the better. But then it also helps us as we're looking at our different operations and citywide operations, and we're looking to streamline practices and procedures, then Karen and Randy can really help us target that stuff and looking at what we do and what we can be doing better and more efficiently. And then, and the end result of all of this, you know, I hope to be coming back to you in a year or two years and talking about what's our long-term goal, what's our long-term plan for doing these kinds of operations? Do we want to continue heavily relying on and leaning on consultant services? Do we need additional staff if we want to bring in in-house? What can we accomplish with the existing staff? Do we want to do a hybrid of in-house staff with consultant services backing us up on specific high-level knowledge, information, and knowledge stuff? So that, that's where we'll get to. So this will be an initial upfront expenditure and, and effort to build up the operations, and then we can come back later with long-term planning for what, what makes sense for us as a small organization and with our limited resources. So that's, that's the first part, just filling in some of the foundational financial stuff. Roberto and I will also be working on putting together some fiscal controls, so that we manage stuff like petty cash, things like that, and we actually have policies and procedures and guidelines, so that staff understand what the parameters are and the rules are for, for the fiscal things that they do in their, in their day-to-day operations, like checking out credit cards and, you know, who's response, who's responsible for final sign-off on purchasing, things like that, so that everybody on staff knows, and getting that all put down. And then, then the next thing is, there we go. So then the next thing is budget development practices. So Roberto and I are, have been talking, and we're going to start to build a more formal process for how we develop the budget. And, and I told the Finance Committee, I'm hesitant to say all of this, because as much as I love to do all this, every time I tell you guys I'm going to do something, I'm adding more work and more accountability for myself. But this is important. I, I think it's, it's really important that we work on, on improving our budget reporting and our budget development and educating the public on what goes into city and municipal finances and budgeting and what that all means. So we'll be standardizing some of our budget reporting and development, and you'll see later with the budget calendar, when you all can expect to see these reports. But, you know, we want to do the mid-year report. What we want to include with the mid-year report is where we are currently in the, in the middle of the year, what that means for us estimating the end of the year, but then also at least three-year forecasting, five-year would be great, on what, what do we see coming in the future, what new revenue sources do we see? Do we see a downturn in any types of revenues like cannabis? And what kind of operational maneuvering do we need to do to address those kinds of things? And then we'll be looking for software. They're relatively cheap software. There's also some free software. We'll be testing them out and looking and making a recommendation on what we think works best. But we want to, we want to standardize our capital improvement plan, so that we can do a better job, partly in educating and managing expectations of the community on what's realistic for an organization our size when it comes to public works projects and maintaining our facilities and our park programs and things like that. We have opportunities right now, generational opportunities, hopefully, with some of the money that's coming from the federal and state governments. But we want to be positioned to where we actually have a plan for our ongoing capital needs, so that as we're looking for projects to apply for some of this funding, we already have it. We're shovel-ready. We know what, what we need to do, rather than looking for projects after the money's available, because then we're not going to be competitive. So, so we'll be looking at, putting together capital improvement program as part of the budget development, and then putting it into a financial sys, system or a capital improvement system, where it can be on the website, people can look at it. It'll show what the funding strategy is for the next five years. And then, you know, at the end of the year, doing a budget end-of-year report, so that we actually talk about what happened last fiscal year and what worked, what didn't work, what can we do better, all of that type of stuff, and start to make plans for any surplus and, and get us ready for the audit, when the audit comes in, so that then you all can be thinking about, you know, what strategies you want to consider for using any year-end surplus. Again, budget document improvements. Our budget book is bare bones right now, which is fine. A lot, a lot of cities are. I'd like to start moving us more toward what the Government Finance Officer Association, what their expectations are for good, sound budget documents and budget reporting. So Roberto and I have that. They have a checklist, and they actually have an award. If you meet enough of their items, you can get a distinguished budget award, which would be nice. That'll take a couple of years. But it's a good checklist on the things that you should have in your budget document that help educate the public on, you know, what's fund accounting, how does that work? What's a capital improvement program? Those kinds of things, even something as simple as a table of contents. A table of contents that links to the sections, so that people don't have to scroll through 180 pages of a document. So we'll be working on that. And then reviewing and revising fiscal policies. One of the things that I think we need to do better is keeping our policies in a place where they're easily found and referred to and followed, because we had difficulty finding the fiscal policies. Fiscal policies were adopted by the council back in 2017, and then I don't, I don't know where they went after that. I'm sure Dino was aware of them. I'm sure you all saw them when you looked for them, but they're not in the budget document. They weren't in the staff report. They're, they're, they're what guide how you manage your finances and how you build your budget. And I think it's, it's useful to revisit those every year at the start of the budget cycle. So what we have is good. It's, it's, it's good basics. Roberto and I will be adding a little bit of meat to that skeleton and then bringing that back to you all for consideration. And then those will appear prominently in our budget documents, so that the community knows what our policies are. And then the other thing, on Friday, we, we just all committed to having monthly Finance Committee meetings, so that we can continue to have these discussions and keep these things in front of us. And more importantly, so that staff and I have, you know, expectations and, and understanding of when we're going to meet and when we're going to be talking about things, and we're not scheduling things kind of haphazardly. And the, and the community, anyone who's interested in finances, there are a lot of people, but the few who are, know when we're going to have those meetings. So we'll have those on the second Friday of every month. And then all of that is when we can, excuse me, talk about long-range considerations and long-range planning. So when we have that foundation, then we'll be better positioned to deal with some of these longer-term things. Roberto and I, in the budget process, are going to highlight some of these as considerations. Doesn't mean we're going to fund these. Just means that we need to keep these things in, in front of us as we're going forward, because these are the things that are, are risks to our financial stability going forward and opportunities. So, you know, you all know about our OPEB liabilities and ongoing CalPERS liabilities and obligations. Those are things that every government agency is dealing with. Debt service is something that's hanging out there that we need to start developing a plan on how are we going to deal with that long-term debt, because we keep racking up interest on that. And so we need to get that dealt with. And then economic development, that's our opportunity for how are we going to better position ourselves for providing more robust services to the community. So I'm trying to be quick, but, but then I'm available for questions.
Great, thank you. So let's begin with Vice Mayor Lintel.
Yeah, I thought that was a, a very complete and informative report, and I have no questions. Thank you.
Okey-dokey. Mr. Gagliotti.
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, also no questions. John, it was even better the second time around.
Ms. Shirley.
I don't have any questions, but I, I do have a few comments. And first, I just want to thank you, John, for kind of what feels like kind of cleaning house a bit. Um, you know, I, this stuff is probably not the fun stuff to being a city manager. I'm sure there's a lot more exciting things you'd be working on, but I'm grateful to you for laying this foundation, because I think it's really important as we go forward. And as you were giving this presentation, I also, it made me think about Karen and Randy and the fact that they're willing to engage in, in these conversations and, and learning in your job. I mean, Karen, you're probably always learning in your job. And so I just want to, I want to thank you for being willing to, to broaden your education and take in this knowledge. I, I, I'm just so grateful for that as well. So, thank you. Um, and then I, I just want to, you know, some of the things I really like about this is this increased transparency. We kind of talked about this in the Finance meeting. I feel like I need the exposure more often. I'm happy that our residents are going to have that exposure more often. So I think our transparency, having more transparencies is super important and will help us make better decisions. And then I'm, you know, excited that you're going to, as you go forward and we get things settled, that you'll look at contract versus in-house. I think that's really important. And then, yeah, let's find those fiscal policies, and I want them in front of us all the time, so that we can, we can better understand how we can make those decisions. So, yeah, thanks. Appreciate it. That's it.
And when the stuff gets really boring, I can assign it to Roberto. That's the great thing about a consultant.
It's true.
I just want to start with thanking Roberto. You know, you've done the heavy lifting and the slogging through the last couple of years, which have, I have seen tremendous change, and I'm looking forward to the next round of change. I think tying to the transparency and the more consistent financial access, but also a really clear path of when to expect things. You know, I'm the one that gets up in the middle of the night and think, oh, my God, we haven't had the audit yet, you know? And I love the numbers. So the more numbers and the more access, the better. I agree with Ms. Shirley, you know, this, this stuff isn't sexy, but we can't run a city well without it. So taking advantage of best practices and, you know, helping us grow into a better city is really good. I'm looking forward to the technology for agendas and processes and the three-year forecasting. It'll make it easier if and when we have year-end balances to be able to know what we need done and how we can funnel the money accordingly. The only other thing I want to mention is, does everyone know who Hermalinda is? No? So Hermalinda does a lot of the work that Kim used to do. Roberto gets all the glamour, though. Did I get that right, Roberto?
You got it.
Pretty much.
Yeah. Um, we get to see Roberto a lot, but we don't get to see Hermalinda. So there is another member of the team that's, that's doing a lot of work behind the scenes for us. And last thing I want to say is, I want that budget award. So let's make that happen. And maybe that's strategic planning, right? I want it in two years. Let's do that. So on that, let's go out to the public. Gary, any comments?
No, no, my camera's not working. I got it covered up. No, great. I mean, it's just, it, I mean, I love technology. I just really, I remember the first time I went in and we were looking for stuff with, and Karen, I might have talked to you, or maybe I talked to Dino. I feel what we're looking for. And it's like, well, it's back in this room. and Karen, I might have talked to you or maybe I talked to Dino. I feel what we're looking for. And it's like, well, it's back in this room. It took literally to the back door and showed me all these boxes, you know, I'm like, it's in this box. One of these boxes somewhere. And I was like, oh, my God, it's like, okay, but where's the electronic one? He's like it's in one of the boxes on paper. I'm like, oh, my God, it's like, so, yeah, it's great to be to hear this coming up like this. So thanks.
Thank you, Gary. So there's no vote. So I think unless anybody has any further comments, I'd like to move on to new business five B, consider the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget calendar.
Okay.
Mr. Gerton.
Share my screen again. This one is definitely one better. Done with visuals. So so part part of this goes hand in hand with what I just presented and talked about is putting together a calendar for the budget development cycle. And then keeping it so that you all have an expectation of when you should be seeing reports. You know when they're going to be coming. Staff knows, okay, this is a goal that we're working toward and a deadline that we have. But it also lets the public know what the process is and putting together a budget is a long process. It takes a long, a long time. So for the last few years, we've done the strategic planning retreats. Every six months. I I know we all have our perception of how those have gone. And the usefulness of them and what could be done better and all that. I'm I'm more accustomed to annual strategic retreat retreats. Doesn't mean that we can't have more strategic planning meetings or workshops or anything. I would rather do those at council and talk about strategic issues at council. And have a strategic planning retreat that's an annual retreat where we talk about longer term goals. And we use that to kind of build you know, you guys help set the policy that helps us focus on where we're making recommendations for budget budget decisions to help our operations. Get get that vision enacted. So I talked with the finance committee group. Normally strategic planning retreats are either in August and September or around March. There's pros and cons to either, I think, actually I wrote in the staff report that it would be the third quarter, which would be March. And then talking with staff and thinking about it more. And then by the time I got to actually presenting it to the finance committee, I changed it to August, September. And and they were gracious enough to agree with me on that. The the main thing of doing it in August and September is it's kind of a down period for us. Everybody's brain is a little fresh. We just passed a budget. It's a good time to be thinking about new things and thinking about bigger things and vision and mission. And not, because a strategic planning retreat should be bigger and broader than just focused on the budget. And when you do it in March, it tends to be heavily focused on budget development. And so that's why I moved it back to August and September. And then for the the development, just go through it quickly for the budget process. In a normal year, when you're not dealing with a pandemic and all of the stuff that goes along with a pandemic and the, you know, the difficulties that the auditors have had with getting information and doing their thing. They have a backlog. So normally Roberto and I would be anticipating getting the audit from the auditors in December, December. It's a little late this year. So we'll, you know, we'll try to get them back on track next year. Usually it would come in December. That would give Roberto and I time to go over it. Make any, you know, ask any questions, make any tweaks to it with the auditors and then promote in January, come to the council with it. So you all can see where we finished the previous fiscal year. We'll go to the built in here, which actually, when when we do do this and put this in the budget book and put it on the website, I'm going to build in the monthly meetings for the finance committee meetings so that that's clear too, because obviously, all of this will go to the finance committee before it goes to the council for consideration. Then when the council reviews the audit, that's also a good time to discuss any surplus if there is and what the council would like to do with that surplus. And then in February, staff, the program managers and department heads will work on their mid-year estimates and forecast. And then in March, we'll come to the finance committee and the council with that presentation and make any mod modifications to the current year's budget that are necessary. Then again, also in March, that's when the the folks who run their operations should be getting to Roberto and I what their requests are going to look like for the next fiscal years budget so that we can start to get our head around what the needs are that are out there versus our resources and what putting together a plan for what we can do, what we can't do going forward. April is what we're shooting for for capital improvement plan. That's good because that's good timing to get it to the finance committee, the council, and then we also have to get it to the planning commission for general plan consistency review. Then shoot for May for budget workshops and then presenting the recommended budget to the council for consideration and then budget adoption in June. So fairly basic stuff, stuff you guys are used to, but at least now we have it on a calendar. So everybody is clear on when things are going to come. So with that, if you have any questions, I can answer questions.
Great. Let's start with Vice Mayor Lynn Tell.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gagliotti.
No, no questions.
Okay, Mr. Donaldson.
Also no questions, very logical, straightforward. I like it.
Ms. Shirley.
Thank you, John, for putting this together. I like what you're thinking about strategic planning. And I like that this is going to be hopefully public on our website. So everyone can can see it and it's available to everyone. So that's it. Thanks.
I agree. I think it's logical. It's transparent and there's no surprises in it. So let's go out to the public. Gary, anything?
No, I mean, again, it sounds really sounds great. I mean, kind of modernizing, kind of bringing it back up into you know, current standards of of how to do business and that's good. And hopefully it will you know, make things, anything makes things more accessible to public is good. And hopefully it also makes things a little easier for the staff. I mean, you know, things will work almost with or maybe they'll fill fewer questions and in the long run, I know it's, you know, it's always upfront costs to get it going, but but once it's up and running, hopefully it will be a win-win for everybody.
Great, thank you. So I'll bring it back to the council. Do, it says an action item, but do we need to vote to approve this? Or is this a report?
Just a report.
Okay, so any last questions, comments before we move on to close session? Seeing none. So thank you so much again, Roberto. And please give our thanks to Hermalinda and John for all this great work. And let's move on to the closed session. So any public comment on the closed session item, which is a conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, California Native Plant Society versus four-door reuse authority at all.
I'll speak for the public. I'll say good night and have a good evening.
Thank you. We'll see you Tuesday, January twenty-fifth.
All right.
Thank you. So on that, we're going to come back and we're going to go into closed session. Do we go into closed session or can you simply stop recording? Because we're all here, Karen. Is everybody here? Scott, one, two, three, four. We're missing Pat. I just want to make sure she can get out. I mean, she may have, she may have gotten out of the meeting completely. Well, let's go ahead. Okay, there she is. Great. So, Mr. Lorca, can you please report out?
Thank you, Mayor. With respect to the one matter on closed session, an update was provided to council and direction was given, but no reportable action was taken.
All right, on that, our next meeting date is Tuesday, January twenty-fifth at six o'clock. On that, we are adjourned. Have a wonderful evening. I like your artwork.
I do too. The Minnesota's finest artist.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thanks, Karen.